With that, let's call the meeting officially to order. This meeting is being recorded, yes? And I think that this meeting will become part of our public record and we'll post it on the county's YouTube channel in the near future. Any other questions to bring to the board yet? Okay. Grant Rider, real quick? You have a proposal on that yet or...
So I don't have a written proposal. I just don't want to anticipate this meeting, but basically, um, maybe I'll hold off until next week. Because this seems like this is a pretty big subject. Or that we have a couple of big subjects to discuss.
We can play it by ear and see.
Well, the big thing, just to be clear, what my proposal will be is to carve up a portion of the money that was originally allocated for marketing and divide that into basically two contracts that we would bid out for grant rating. The smaller one would be for probation, the sheriff's department. C-Jab related grants. The larger one would be for planning and zoning, EIP, economic development, and stuff related to that.
Okay. Very good. You know, I think this perfectly aligned with what we're hearing the need is in these town hall meetings that we've been going to. As well as what we already know needs to happen. And I think it makes sense to do 1099. We already have the money allocated. We just need to reallocate it.
And there, um, there's at least one person that I'm aware of that would be an easy candidate for law enforcement, C-Jab-type grants, that would be able to handle that. So I feel pretty confident we can move pretty quick on that.
Okay. Very good. The next item on our agenda, discussion pertaining to emergency medical services. And for this purpose, we've invited many people. Ken McCorson, Department of Safety Director, Paul Pascuzzi, Cog Fire Services, President, and President of Fire in the Borough, and President of Climate and Fire Department. Any other hats on the scene?
No, certainly.
New Chief, Matt Rand from the City of Warren. You had it?
No, the Operations Training Officer for the City of Warren Fire Department, Steven Hoffman.
Steven Hoffman. You're probably here for voting. Nancy Freenock, City Mayor. So at several of the town hall meetings, we've had discussions with responders that have come to the meetings. And a theme seems to be concern related to the future of emergency medical services in the county. I think the concern in the city seems to be the number of calls that they're having to take outside of the city that they're not getting fully compensated for. And the, uh, in the more outlying communities, their concern seems to be related to the number of volunteers and the call times that are increasing. This is not new to those that have been having their ear to the ground, such as Mr. McCorson, Mr. Pascuzzi, who have been kind of raising the alarm bell about this for several years now. The personnel have come to fruition what they foresaw happening. And so some of the numbers that we're looking at, for instance, the PSAP, or 911 Center, reports that the number of calls for BLS agencies in 2017 included, 2017 was almost 2,500 calls. 2018 was 2,200 calls. And only about half of them were answered on time. A quarter were answered after 10 minutes. And a quarter were not answered at all by the primary dispatch agency, if I'm reading that correctly. Paid Forest was much closer to 100%. And QRS units, I think are relevant to this discussion, but does there not be transporting agency? I think would probably need to spend time on QRS.
I think you might want to consider utilizing them as part of a complete holistic EMS plan, absolutely.
Certainly. So one of the things that Paul and I talked about at the fire time, was the idea of having a task force set up specifically for the emergency medical services. And this is not to trump or take away anything from the agencies that are part of fire services, the Fire Services Committee, the EMS Council, LEPC, et cetera. But instead, we've got to augment everything that they are doing and collaboratively put it into one single document that could almost act as a preparatory document for a consultant, which is what the Cog Fire Services has been talking about for six months or a year. And so I started to draft a resolution that would enact a EMS task force under the commissioners, with full recognition that it is the municipalities that have the authority over fire EMS. So we are not intending to trump municipalities or supersede, but simply augment and support their efforts. I have drafted that document and could present it, but I would like to offer the floor to Mr. Pascuzzi first to kind of describe the facts as to how we got here.
Paul, thank you. The town hall meeting in Clarinet, we talked at length. Warren County's always stepped up to a lot of the challenges. And I thank the county commissioners for taking on and establishing a new task force. In the recent past, the county stepped up when there was a need for a new computer-aided dispatch to enhance for world-class dispatch of our emergency providers. They also stepped up when it came time to provide the next-generation radio system. And now it's time for the county to hopefully put that kind of energy behind the response of EMS across the county. The numbers that you presented are pretty clear. One of the things that's interesting is the BLS from a volunteer perspective. Those call, that call volume dropped from one year to the next, where the call volume on the paid department went up at the same rate. So we know that in the case of the volunteers, they're unable to meet the needs of their community. They're relying on those that get paid. So it's a model that up until now has worked fine. Now it's time for a new model. What that model is, everyone has an opinion. And everyone has probably 30 different solutions. And when you have that many ideas and that many solutions, nothing can go forward unless we have some consensus on really, what should we be focusing our energy and effort on from a county-wide perspective? To assume that the volunteers are going to be able to try to solve them independently is not going to work. Nor can, and nor can we assume that the municipal elected officials, the township superiors, the council members are going to be able to provide their community with a solution is also, not going to work as well. So we need to bring all the stakeholders together in some fashion. So I appreciate that. We have lots of facts that identify this issue. We just need to, to put together something that everyone, everyone can agree to that provides a rapid response of EMS to the citizens of Warren County.
Very good. Do you view this as the end goal of such a task force, a document that augments or replaces the EMS plan? How does this fit in?
Now, I think the EMS plan has submitted to the state Commonwealth Department of Health. Will stand okay. This is something to support that and augment that. We need, you know, we have a plan. The plan says, if you can't make, if you can't make it, call out of service. Contact your neighbors. Let Ken at the 911 Center know that you're out of service. And we find that, you know, 10% of the time that works, the other 90% of the time, it just isn't working. Puts a significant amount of stress on the system, stress on the dispatch. And really unfortunately, doesn't provide for a response to the people who are in need, which, that's a fact. The fact is, people in Warren County are expecting, have an expectation that when they call 911, that when they need an ambulance, it's coming. And we need to solve that.
Mr. McCorson, do you have any mind?
I can just say that I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Paul Pascuzzi just said. That it's almost creating places to make mistakes within our system if the plan isn't followed. And we need to shore that up in a hurry.
Okay. Can you expand on that a little bit more exactly what that means and what I can grab with that?
So when an agency is liable to cover their calls, they designate another agency to cover their calls. And there are very few agencies that do that on a regular basis. So we essentially take a step back from the system that we just adopted and step back to having to check pieces of paper and emails. Is this service available today? Is this service unavailable today? And it almost adds time to the process. And it definitely adds a level of complexity to the process of getting an ambulance dispatched and proper ambulance dispatched.
Very good. Any questions? Please, the presenters at this point. Chief Brown, do you want to say anything?
No, sir, not at this time. I'm still, I'm still listening, learning to get an email.
Sure.
You stated earlier that it was, the city was here on behalf of just the financial concern. And it's not just from my standpoint. It may be a facet of that, that this is a multifaceted thing, where it's taxing the city, not only from a financial standpoint, but also from us being able to provide the fire services protection for the City of Warren taxpayers that they're paying for. Because as our ambulance goes to Clarinet, or Youngsville, or Russell, and is tied up for an hour, we lose that six-man fax of the fire protection for the City of Warren, along with that other ambulance that the City of Warren had built into themselves. So I have talked to multiple agencies outside of the city. And people don't understand that there's a standby cost for those services to be provided. And they feel that when our ambulance takes a call in those areas, that we're being compensated for. But that doesn't compensate for that standby time that that ambulance is there. So those men cost money to have there along with their response time. So I just, the waters are kind of cloudy when it comes to that. But there's a cost to doing business in fire EMS when you have a professional service out there. And every time that asset leaves, it drops the protection that the City of Warren, the taxpayer is paying for. So it's not just a financial thing. It's also, the guys need those men there to do their response the way it is. The people that are paying for that are expecting that same response of six men to be there to help. We all saw what happened in the City of Erie yesterday. That is directly affected by the number of personnel that you have on the scene. All right? So on that facet, there's more to it than just a tax dollar, a tangible asset. There are times spent dispatching agencies for 20 minutes trying to get an ambulance on the road. That is directly a relation to people not calling themselves out of service. If they take that one time to call their neighbor and say, hey, can you cover for us? They contact County Control. County Control now doesn't spend 20 minutes trying to get an ambulance to come there because they already know to go there. So it's a matter of a dispatch goes off to the right person that's covering that day, saves them time and energy as well. So I mean, it's just that one stance, the way the EMS plan was built was to try and mitigate some of these problems that it just wasn't, it wasn't embraced after it was put into flight. So there's just things to consider. The task force, I think, is probably the why to move forward because we need to get this ball in to make something happen.
Paul, do you view the primary goal of this almost to shore up the difference between what's currently happening and what the plan aspires, the EMS plan aspires to do? I mean, in other words, if the plan was followed, would there be a problem, an immediate crisis?
No. I mean, if it was followed, then it would, the dispatch would know exactly who to respond. The response would be timely, hopefully. Unfortunately, people who are calling the city, I don't want to pick on a community, but let's say it's the community that's 15 miles away from the center of City of Warren. And that agency has selected the city to help with the dispatch because they can't make it. Well, you know, those people live 15 miles away. I would assume that their neighbors and their local volunteer department are going to be able to respond and get there instead of waiting for the city to get a crew and get there, you know, 15, 20 minutes. So it's more than just that. It's, it's, it's a matter of geographically, those eight BLS agencies are geographically located very nicely. Unfortunately, then the problem is the staffing of them is not available 24/7. So I can appreciate the issues in the City of Warren. And, but I think I can appreciate the dilemma that the volunteers are facing today. So what we need to come up with is a model that makes the city whole and makes the county response on time. Not sure what that looks like, and I'm not going to try to come up with an idea here today. But there's certainly plenty of ideas on how to put this together. It's just a matter of getting it on a piece of paper. Action items, actionable items, and moving forward with some sort of a project.
Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to make clear a couple of things. First of all, the volunteers, and I know everybody in this room recognizes this, provide a valuable service to this community. They come in and have helped the city on numerous fires that we've had. And we would do the same. The issue, part of the issue is that I think that the definition of mutual aid has been somewhat bastardized, if you'll excuse me. Mutual aid is to be used when the home agency is already out on a call somewhere else. What's happening now is they're not responding because they don't have the personnel. We understand that. But that doesn't always mean that the city is going to be available. We do have a six-man minimum in our contract. There have to be six people in that station. If we have somebody that's going to be out for an extended period of time, we're left having to call in on overtime. And the city can't continue to maintain those costs. They're escalating as, as everybody's operational costs are. And it's gotten to the point where our budget for the fire department is the largest segment of the city budget. And we haven't raised taxes in a number of years. And I find it unconscionable to go to our taxpayers and say, I need a tax increase because our fire costs are going up. Our fire costs are going up because we have 200 simultaneous calls and a quarter, or quarter to half of our calls are outside city limits. So it's a question in my mind of fairness, and that's, that's all that we're looking for. But the highest and most significant question is, how do we serve the residents of Warren County? Not just the city, but the county.
Do you want to speak at all the year for the intervention program?
I can mention what, what the suggestions were. Not that any of them are particularly favorable.
Well, you identified a fact that they identified.
One is that we take the second ambulance out of service. Another is that the city not honor the subscriptions that are sold by the volunteer fire companies. And so we would then balance bill the patient for what was not covered by Medicare or other insurance. Another is that we offer our subscription program in the townships, which I understand years ago was done. I think people would, would have a problem understanding that. And another is just not to respond to calls. Again, that's unconscionable.
Great. There's no use of solution there. I think that just kind of highlights again the importance of having some minds sit together on task forces to figure that out. Because I don't, I agree with you. I don't think either, any of those options particularly strike me as viable. Mr. Scully?
I'm fortunate in township that we, I am supervisor, which is great. We, years ago, made an agreement with Emergent Care. I don't see an Emergent Care representative here. Is there any way that we can get more emergency services here? Because when we have a, a medical call in our township, Emergent Care responds. There are our ambulances. We don't have an ambulance itself. But it just seems that we don't include Emergent Care. Yeah, you can join. And I put it to use for the last month, and I highly would recommend anybody join. I have no problem with the city creating a similar program, allowing the residents outside the city limits to also join, because that would be another outlet that an individual could use. But how do you get more ambulance service here? There's only a few that'll respond. Yeah, I think it's ridiculous. I've always argued with Paul and the Fire Service Committee that I sit with them on, that the 10-minute response time is a very hard thing for townships like my own to respond because half our volunteers don't live within 10 minutes of the fire hall. I just, we have to have emergency surgery. Yeah, the volunteers are pleading, the younger people don't understand some of the benefits of being a volunteer. I would like to see Emergent Care get a little more, maybe we, as you as the commissioner, Commissioner Catherine, maybe you can convince them to have more available ambulances around.
Sure. So two things to know. First of all, Emergent Care is on the list of organizations needing representation on this task force, certainly. I personally would recommend Jim Zadensky simply because I've worked with him on the EMS council. And so he kind of wears both hats. But certainly willing to ask Emergent Care who they would like as a representative. To your second point about the 10-minute plus, I totally understand. I have myself had a hard time getting to my fire station within 10 minutes. I live like six minutes away, so by the time you throw a blanket on, whatever. Now, it can easily be 10 minutes, but it doesn't change the fact that the no response is still a quarter of the calls. So that's something that I certainly didn't even know until seeing these numbers.
That's just statistics from your end, I have to go to the exact comment. Yeah, very good. Just, just to be clear to Mr. Spock's comment. I checked with the nine surrounding counties that are within our consortium. And Warren County has 10 minutes is the most any volunteer fire department in this whole area has been. We're giving you more time. The other 911 directors are, are saying, wait a minute, we, 10 minutes is too long. You know, if you're, if you're a volunteer. So just understand, we're giving you more time.
Yeah, I understand that. But another thing I'd like to, somehow this committee that you're going to put together, I, you know, as a supervisor, I'm not a volunteer, but I was raised in the volunteer service. I hate to hear a volunteer fireman that responds to an emergency say, oh, so-and-so didn't come out or respond because he or she doesn't like to go on calls with a particular individual. I think we have to get it through these volunteers that are EMTs and that, that it isn't, you may not like me, but we have a person in our township that needs medical attention immediately. And you better put your dislikes to the side or get it through their head that, that they took the test, they qualified, they passed all the tests, they have a responsibility to respond, not say, I ain't going with so-and-so. I hate to hear that. And when I hear it, I get kind of upset. And that's up to the individual chiefs in the fire department or a head of EMS. You, you took the test. You want to serve the people. Quit nitpicking who you go with. That enriches me more than anything.
I don't want to, you know, draw out any names of any business or anything that's in the business in the industry. But what I will say is, I can bring you statistics of how many calls I ran in Blading Township last year or this year alone. And that is being provided by another agency. Now, they look like they have 100% call rate. But if I'm running calls in Blading Township, that means they're not running 100% call rate for their contract in Blading Township. If you follow what I'm saying there, if they're saying they're providing EMS coverage for Blading Township 100% of the time, then I should not be going to Blading Township, which means that number is somewhat skewed in, in that we are taking calls for that entity. So maybe that's another thing you can look at is, what time are they out? And how many calls have they dropped in Blading Township? And that may give us a true sense of their dropped calls to the township itself.
Could the 911 Center uphold where the ambulance is coming from? Because if I understand it, for instance, if an agency is called Spring Creek Township where I serve, and I get there as a QRS, you then may dispatch another agency. But for instance, Corey doesn't have any ambulances. They might be pulling somebody from Waterford, Erie, which means it could be almost an hour before they get there.
It would be a customized report, but it can be done.
Yeah, it'll be done.
Okay.
And for the other folks in this room, I have no briefing on that. This is not a Warren County issue. This is a systemic, state, national issue that's given this a very, very pointed problem.
I mean, the volunteers are a huge asset to their community.
Absolutely.
They are the unsung providers of community pride in their communities. I don't think we can ever try and find fault with any of them. I think that they are the most dedicated people that spend a lot of time of their own, hours and hours and hours volunteering their time. So we would never want to diminish their service to, to the community. So I, it's, it's a puzzle. This is a real puzzle. And I can appreciate that it's not necessarily only a Warren County issue. However, if we at Warren County aren't able to solve this ourselves, and we wait for other municipal officials or state officials to try to solve it for us, God help us.
Agreed.
100%.
All right. But there are a couple of, I think, action items that come out of this. First is that the resolution will be on the next agenda for commissioners. Which will, by the way, actually will make this announcement now, it will not be this Wednesday. We will be canceling the commissioners meeting for this Wednesday in honor of former board. And would encourage the county staff that would like to attend the funeral to be in attendance if more or less coincides with the meeting that would have been scheduled for. So again, we'll be canceling that meeting this Wednesday, and the next meeting will be the 28th, I believe. So you'll see that on the agenda, I'll sponsor that. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, Mr. Pascuzzi, Mr. McCorson, Mr. Freenock, and I got together last week and had a couple of fruitful conversations with the Commonwealth, obviously, the Chiefs was a great one, so. And the main result of one conversation is I think we should apply for technical assistance. Question is, would the city or the county do that? Since you're the municipality that did the US, I suppose, right?
No, I think actually I did it in your name. I haven't circulated the draft yet, but, but since it's going to be a multi-municipal plan, I'm just doing it in the name of the county.
Okay. And we're the cog, fire, cog services. No, I'm just a cog. Either way, yes, that's agreeable with you, I assume, correct for sure.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I did it in the name of the council. I apologize. The council governments, that's right.
Either way, I think we can get a blanket approval to run it through the county, if that makes sense. Council governments, whatever. So the technical assistance would be number one. Step two is, should we go ahead and apply for the municipal assistance? What does the MAP stand for?
Municipal Assistance Program.
Program.
Yeah, I think there might be a timing issue there because the way I read the letter of intent, I think the cog really should take a vote on it. And the next meeting is until the beginning of September. And would be a good idea to get the MAP application in, I think, sooner rather than later. But I don't know how they would weigh each one. They go to different places, so.
Right. I would assume you could do it. You know, vote?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Really? Isn't that sunshine law violation?
Um, not sure. You'd have to check with a solicitor. I'm not a solicitor, even though I stayed at a holiday ex post.
But application, why would the cog have to be the one driving the application? Or would the county be?
They put a lot of credence on collective organizations' icons.
Oh, no, I totally understand that. I'm just saying, if you're looking to get it in, in a rush, why the county couldn't drive it and then say, you know, or why not have the Fire Services Committee meet and then then vote to support that?
We have a name for this. Surprising. So we could say on behalf of the Call Fire Services Subcommittee, we would like to file for either the technical or the MAP or both. And I might go on record saying we want to go with both.
Yeah, and I get the idea of having a joint application or having a group application. I totally understand that. Maybe that's something that we follow up on if this doesn't seem like it's gonna work, you know?
Um, yeah.
I mean, it depends on how fast you want to do it. If you can wait two months, go after it and you can get the COG meeting, I'm sure everybody at the COG would support it.
Yeah, the Fire Service Committee, I think, is a good idea. I just wasn't sure, that's a formally recognized body you were appointed by? I don't know how that was set up, that's the only reason why.
It would have been formally created by the COG, so it would be a formal subcommittee, a separate group.
Actually, the motion was made by his dad.
There you go.
That's how long ago this was.
Almost ten years ago, yes.
Yeah, I think Jeff was just twelve years old.
I know that's a little bit.
You're high age here.
Yeah, okay, well then I can, and Paul, are you the chairman of that or is there?
The COG Fire Services, yeah.
Okay, so I'll set it up for your signature then.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't think we'd have a problem if the Fire Service Committee approves this to convince the members of the COG.
No, I agree, Joe.
It'd be.
We're here to support them.
The COG would.
And oh, by the way, I mean, all of the municipalities that are part of the COG at the time they were formed agreed to adopt the recommendations that we put forward. So we've been given a proxy for the COG, so.
Very good. Well, that is.
So is both okay? I mean, what's the risk if we file both technical and MAP?
I think honestly you're gonna muddy the waters and you might wind up, under the technical assistance, there is no match, we pay nothing.
Correct.
Well, think about it. If you got an application where the state's gonna fund everything versus one where the state's gonna pay a percentage and there's gonna be cash coming from the municipalities, which one would you fund if you were the state?
I got it, but sometimes a bargain isn't always a bargain.
Well, then that's true too. I.
You go back on the technical assistance pretty quickly, don't you?
Yeah.
Three weeks or so.
Oh, yeah.
One only, one only applied.
That's fine, well, let me ask you the other question. We do the technical, we got approved, we were formed with whoever they give us from a resource perspective to assistance. Can we then go after MAP monies in the next round, maybe this for? If it's a recommendation, that makes the most sense. Hey, listen, the facts are, the Act thirty-seven was passed in two thousand nine and was implemented in two thousand and fourteen, which highlighted the need for the local agencies to meet the twenty-four seven criteria. So we've been at this a while, for years. And if we have to wait a couple of months, I think we'll get it.
Well, I think we had discussed too. One step is getting the plan together. Where do we need money for implementation?
I agree, yeah. There's definitely probably three different steps we're gonna have to follow. This is such a big puzzle, you can't assume that one group's gonna be able to solve it. But at least it brings, yeah, task force brings us together, technical assistance makes some recommendations, we put together some action plans, those action plans are gonna cost some money too.
Well, and if we are not happy with whomever the state selects as the peer-to-peer advisor, we can always ask them to come up with someone else. Because we need somebody that has experience with volunteers, has experience with an EMS and a career fire department, so it's.
Yeah, and I don't know, we'll see, we'll see what they give us. They came just to throw us a fish.
No, no. I had one in Clary and they brought me the Public Works Director from Cranberry Township in Butler County.
Oh, all right.
He was excellent, so.
So, and I'm assuming, we're not the first ones of the thirty, or the sixty-seven counties of looking for some sort of assistance from a tech perspective for this topic. So there's gotta be some experts here. I'm not sure if they're in the area code eight one four, but let's hope there's somebody.
Now you have reached out to, I'm sorry, it was Franklin, it was Franklin County. It is currently undergoing a similar.
Yeah.
Made contact with, I believe it's Florida too, but.
Yeah, but I haven't seen the details on that.
Right, there are a couple, there are a couple steps ahead of us basically, but they're not completed with their plan, so.
Yeah, and Franklin County, sorry, is Chamberlain Burgh, so.
Yeah.
Chamberlain Burgh, Earl, Chamberlain Burgh, one of the two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Pipe County, by the way, is also another one that's doing something. That's what we heard, Pipe County, was the other?
Very good. Both in some, it sounds like there's support for this task force. I want to stress again, and I can't stress it too strongly, that this is not meant to diminish any agency or any organization that currently works in this space. We're simply trying to pull the best minds and ideas together into one cohesive document. Certainly doesn't supersede the municipality's authority or try to push any organization out of their claim space. We're simply trying to step into a void, I think, and pull the ideas together for everyone's access. Any comments?
So from my perspective, and obviously like generally on the EMS stuff, I defer to Commissioner Capel on a lot of these issues. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is, is that, and all of this is stuff that I voiced at the town hall and we had this discussion previously, is that from my perspective, I don't believe that we can solve this with volunteers alone. I think that it needs to be said that, like, I would urge the task force and anybody involved to make part of the report or the offering a clear plan to have some kind of paid solution. And I say that for a couple of reasons. One is, is having gone to dozens of meetings where the issue of volunteership comes up and it's so routine now that my eyes glaze over when it's, when I hear the word volunteer. I think that we have to acknowledge the fact that, number one, the population has declined by seven thousand over the past twenty-five years. And that might not seem like a lot, but you're talking, who is that seven thousand? And when you look at the age of the county and how that's changed over the past twenty-five years, there aren't any, there aren't enough young people, even if they were volunteering at a really high rate to handle the situation that we're dealing with. And we have to just face up to that and acknowledge it. It's not, it's never going to be, I mean, I shouldn't say it's never gonna be like, it's probably never going to be the way it was in nineteen seventy-two again. And so we have to move forward from a perspective of, and this is the other point that I want to make, is that there should be something, that there should be a discussion about regional options. You know, region, whether they're, whatever they are, I'm not saying that I'm an expert, I'm not, but it's so apparent that the regions of this county need to start pulling together and then figuring out a way to have some kind of paid solution, you know, on some level. And for my, and the reason I state that is that I am willing to, as another commissioner, heave on whatever support at the county level that is necessary. Because from my perspective, listening to the numbers, listening to everybody talk, although I wouldn't refer to this as a crisis per se, it's not hard for me to see a situation where if things change just this much, it becomes one relatively quickly. And we can't, we can't do half-measures anymore. Like, in my, from my perspective, like, my recommendation for your task force would be to come back with a plan that has some teeth to it and has some figures attached to those teeth so that we can move in a direction. And the only other thing I'll say is, and I said this too, is I understand the issue of wanting to have a consultant. And I think that a consultant is a very, might be a very important piece of that solution. But all of the things that you're gonna talk about, that task force, we've talked about a hundred different times. And everybody knows what the problems are and everybody knows on some level what the solutions are. And really, that's what that task force should be, is putting those solutions on paper and then having the courage to carry them out, both financially and logistically, and having those tough conversations that aren't gonna be, that aren't gonna be easy to have, you know? Because that's, because you're either gonna do that or we're gonna be in status quo. And my, my thing with what you had said about the EMS plan and everything related to that, part of the reason where we're at is because there's only so much we can do to leverage our position to get people to act one way or the other. And you have no leverage over volunteer folks. And frankly so, you know? You get, there's a benefit to that because of the cost related, but, you know, there's gotta be, there's gotta be another step above where we're at. And that's all I'll say is, is that we need to make sure that that's considered as, or I would urge you to consider it as a part of the plan, because I think that this is the time to do it and we can make it work, you know?
So you're at, I'm the only one here old enough to remember this now. When I started in the volunteer service, well, I mean, in time in office or in the industry, when Ken and I started in the industry many, many years ago, we were still pretty flush with volunteers, okay? And Paul's been around the volunteer industry long enough to know that. But when I came into the city of Warren Fire Department, I tested with almost fifteen people for a quarter of the pay it is now. All right, it's not a poor goal since I came, testing with over fifteen people. Our last hire, we tested maybe four if you're lucky, and I met up with two people out of that. And we used to test twice a year, we work once a year now. So we're paying people four times what our guys were hired and we can't get them to take a paycheck for it. So we really expect our volunteers to handle this problem? They may be a facet of it, but they're not the answer.
I just want to comment also on the thought about regionalization. Often people cringe at that. I mean, you and I cringed a little bit when you said that, because I feel like, oh, you might be taking away part of my space. But it really doesn't have to be a bad word because regionalization can simply be what the EMS plan frankly is in terms of if you're out of service, call in. Maybe that means cross-deputizing some agencies so that, you know, if you were a member of Spring Creek or Garland, if you want to jump on the ambulance in Youngsville, you can do that. It doesn't have to mean taking away any departments or consolidating them. It simply means working together more effectively, right?
Well, I think that the EMS response plan and the countywide plan and the collection of the data opened a lot of eyes. And I think that, we presented it actually in July of two thousand eighteen to municipal officials at the COG meeting, which opened their eyes. But I think that there are certain individuals in the county, including the township supervisors and the council members, that are looking for someone to help them with a solution because they themselves independently cannot come up with a solution. And it's not their fault. I mean, this is a puzzle we've been looking at for a long time. So we need to bring everyone together to come up with a solution and then take it out to the community as a, as an idea that has, you know, grassroots support.
You know, I mean, I agree with that. I think that when you go, when I talk to townships individually, I see a lot of interest in support and help. Like, in some, in some cases, they're, they know they're at a loss and they're just trying to make do with what they've got. And I think that if, and that's, I think that there are carrots that can be put on the table to get everybody to really consider a bigger solution than trying to do a drive for volunteers or recruit, you know, come up with recruitment tactics and stuff like that. I think that there are carrots you can put on the table where the, those, you know, the townships and some of those, those ones are gonna be interested. The other thing I wanted to say was, there are a few things that I know politically for a fact. One of them is, if you're in your house and you're in trouble, you want somebody to show up as quickly as possible. And I don't, and for all the things that we spend money on tax-wise, that we, for better or for worse, you know, fiscally responsibly, fiscally responsibly or otherwise, I don't think anyone would have a problem with tax dollars being spent on a better response to their emergencies. And so that's why I'm saying, like, don't, we need to be, we need to think about this in bigger terms and be bolder. You know, the county traditionally has tried to avoid expenses as much as possible and I get that, and that's not a bad way to be. But we're, you know, you can only configure this puzzle so many different ways with what we've got resource-wise. And nobody's been able to come up with a fixed one. And so it's like, we either have to increase the resources or regionalize the resources or, you know, come up with some way to put something in the pot. Like, I, for all the things that we've spent money on, like at the county level, I guess is what I'm saying, is if some portion of that was allocated to this, I don't think that anyone would have any problem that if they thought it would improve their response time. And I think about the number of seniors that we have in the community and I think about my parents and like other folks and think about, if they're out there and they're having an issue, how long would I want them to leave? You know? And when you put it in that perspective, I'm like, let's, we need, yeah, let's do whatever we can to figure this out.
I have a question. Can anybody give me a figure that a township would have to raise or create another fire tax where it would help us financially? I mean, if I submit in January at our meeting that we're going to increase the fire tax per residence, how much would it, can anybody give me the figure that would make sense where it would help us financially on the fire service?
I don't know that we do have an answer to that. To some extent, that's why we need the task force to figure things like that out.
Yeah, Joe, I think from an independent perspective, if you said, well, is it gonna cost me? If I want to have a paid department in my station versus the volunteers, I, we could probably give you a pretty good idea of what that is. And it's probably gonna be two million dollars because the city Warren, that's what they've got.
I would like, yeah, that's, I know it's gonna be, but it's gonna come down to, I'm gonna have to say to the residents of Blade Township, we're gonna raise the fire tax so that we can cover protection because.
Well, I mean, the fire tax is one area we don't want to look at, there's probably others, but we just haven't looked at it.
Yeah, we need to look at some of those.
Is that on the ballot question for your township?
Pardon?
You probably have to put that on the ballot.
Yeah.
You don't have to, you don't have to.
A fire tax?
Nope.
No, we have a fire tax.
They usually do that, just to gauge the.
Okay, sorry.
But many municipalities give us thumbs up or thumbs down on three mils of tax for earmarking public safety. In recent history, you can go back and look at what Sheffield Township's done as it related to public safety, so.
And I think that it's, the Commissioner Capel and making a task force together is a really great idea because when you get all of those people in a room and sit down, I think that you'll be very pleased with what comes out of it. That's been my experience where there, some areas are gonna have different solutions than other ones, I think. I think that when you start looking at the geography of the county and what, because from my perspective, there's no shortage of ambulances, there's no shortage of fire trucks, there's no shortage of equipment in this county. It's people. And, and, and once you start looking at that picture, it really comes down to, okay, how does, how is everybody accommodated, how we walk away where we have a better solution, but everybody feels pretty good about it? Like, that's the thing, and some of them, there might be people that come to that meeting and say, you know, well, we've been talking about this for years, you should just do this, this and this. And then everybody goes, yeah, that's a great solution for that corner of the county. You know, I mean, it's hard.
I don't want to keep this going, but to your point, can't the total county ambulances in Warren County?
Nine, well, nine.
That's stations.
Nine stations.
We have lost, I would say probably thirty percent of the ambulances in Warren County the last twelve years. North Warren had four, they're gone. Sheffield had two or three.
Two, at least left two.
They have two. Clarendon had two, you're down to one, correct? Youngsville had two or three at one point, they're down to one.
Blade, yeah, they're, they're.
I mean, they're only a certain part of the deck. So I mean, through attrition, we really have conceivably lost a lot more ambulances than you think we have in Warren County, and it is still a drying up fridge.
Oh, yeah.
And we can't really afford, that's what this plan needs to take into consideration. And we can't really afford, that's what this plan needs to take into consideration, like you said about QRS earlier, Glade being the QRS agency, they have personnel out there, they're not a BLS one, but they're actually here with some representation. But as that fruit continues to grow, it just taxes ourselves in emergency even more, because they're having trouble, we can't really let them fail, we gotta figure out what this is before they completely fail, and it's all on the two other services.
Yeah, and that is, and this goes back to the comment that Chief Pascuzi said many years ago, is we need to come up with a solution while we still have a core base to work with. Once that base and core structure are over, we're gonna be scrambling, and it's gonna become a crisis, and the crisis then is gonna be handled by municipal officials, and it's really not the way this is gonna, we want this to go.
And to Nancy's point, when she said earlier, the EIB, what's their thought? Take an ambulance out of service. That's exactly the point that I was just making, we can't afford for a volunteer one to fail, but if you take one of the professional ones out, that's just a major super tax, because that other ambulance is part of the solution, not part of the problem. So, it's gonna get uglier and uglier if we don't get this problem taken care of soon.
Well, I, the, the thing is, you get into the cart and the horse then, which is, okay, so your population declines by a fifth, you know, or quarter, your need in all these different areas declines, so then they offload equipment, where, and this is why the regional concept is so important, or at least coordinating regionally, because I betcha that some of those resources get used a heck of a lot more than some of the other ones do. And so, there's ones that we have underutilized, we have ones that are overutilized, you know? And that's kinda what I'm saying, is, is, to me, there's definitely an equation in there that, that is a lot easier to get to than I think people realize, and it's a matter of putting it right on paper, you know?
I don't think the decrease in population correlates exactly with the decrease in services. I think because of the age increasing, there's more need, but to, to Joe's point also, I think the cost analysis will be part of the task force's charge. They'll have to figure out possible solutions and what the costs are. And one thing that was not mentioned in the EIP, but which Chief Pascuzi did mention as a possible solution, was having the city station, have our six-man crew, but take some of that crew and possibly putting it in Pleasant or wherever. And there's a cost to that, but at least the response time will be quicker. That's something I think that the task force will look at. I certainly, you know, as I tell my guys, I don't wanna run your department, and I don't think municipal officials should either, because they don't know how a fire service runs.
Exactly.
But, but I think if you can give them options, that's, that I think is, is what the task force.
There is no price on life, what you need, and again, I'm telling you, an incident that disappened to me within a month. When you have an individual that's down, and it's one of your loved ones, I don't care who comes, the city, emergency care, or Clarendon, I'm looking for medical people. That's the name of the game. We don't want us to have this in the area. How do you explain to parents, oh, we couldn't get an ambulance? I don't care where the ambulance comes, I don't know what it costs Glade Township, but you know Glade will support what you have. We need ambulance services and fire service in Warren County.
And just to go back to what Nancy's saying, that's, I guess, exactly what I'm trying to say is, is that my, you know, you probably were thinking about doing the same, but I guess my point is, is like, not to have a report that says, you know, we don't have enough volunteers, that we need to do a recruitment drive and all this, but have numbers or proposals that have, you know, identifiable figures, and then, you know, and move forward on something.
That is the goal. Sounds like we're all on the same page. It is almost 1 o'clock, so.
Just to sort of wrap it up, I mean, what we're looking for is boots on the ground for responders that can put boots on the ground to get a response that is, you know, where people expect us to be.
All right, well, with that, why don't we, uh.
Yeah, that's true.
Move on to the building equipment storage.
So, so with the, with this move towards, with the up, with the upgrading of the equipment as that is progressing, we do not have a contract yet that's signed, but.
Close.
But, but the elections board is expected to be, for that to be incredibly close. The systems that the elections board is looking at have a couple of components. One is a smaller tablet monitor.
Ballot marketing.
Ballot marketing device, and then an accompanying printer. The ballot marketing device is much smaller than the machines that we have currently. We currently have 86 machines, we're going down to 66, so smaller machines, less space. I think, for me, the big concern in this, and Lisa might have a different perspective on it, is I'm not so much worried about the ballot marketing device, because I think that those would easily fit where the current machines fit. I think the bigger problem is, is the printers, because we have 66 printers that are like about this big, like a standard.
You've got a closet over at DPS?
Well, the, so, so what I was thinking temporarily is we do one of two things. We need to get through the fall election, basically, and then, then we'll have to be more conservative of a permanent location. As it stands, number one, we don't, everything should be done with the conference room down the hall for the rest of the year, because we have the do licenses that.
Right.
The only other thing potentially would be the auditing firm, but they can use the commissioner's conference room.
As long as it's available.
Yeah, which, which generally was, I mean, the only thing that we use this for is like for our work sessions, where we have to have it here. My recommendation would be to put the printers in the conference room for this election. Then, in January, have a place, a permanent place to put them.
And they're open to have your own bags, own cases.
Yeah.
You know, wheel.
Yeah, I think they definitely would fit in a conference room. I don't think we'd have a problem fitting them in there.
Okay.
But, because what I was, the, I guess the thing that I would ask you, and I haven't had a chance to ask you yet, is the printers, the machines you need to test, the printers would just need the load for the election, right?
No, the ballot marketing device and the printer would have to be tested in conjunction with each other to make sure that they're talking to each other, so that when they're taken to the polls, it was like every ballot marketing device, then it'd have its own printer, so you've got, you know, like two for precincts. So, when I test these things, I need to test everything, every component, when I do my logic and accuracy testing. So, I need them here so I can test them.
I mean, aren't, aren't all the printers are all the same? I mean, why would?
It's just recommendations of what we have to do for logic and accuracy testing. Like, when I do the machines, now I test every single machine.
Yeah.
And I'm not really exactly sure what the logic and accuracy testing is gonna be like with these new ones. I'm not that far, so I get them here, I start working with them and that sort of thing. But we have the ballot boxes, they lay flat, we've got privacy screens, and they're all gonna be in their own carrying case, per se. Those would be, or the, either lay flat or stacked or something, so.
Well, I guess, I guess my thing is, is can you check to see if you have to check everything?
I will, yes.
I mean, because, I mean, if a printer doesn't work, you just replace the printer, why would, why would each printer need to be tested?
I don't know, that's why I'm not entirely sure of yet, until we get everything here.
So, did the state mandate that you have to test every printer?
Well, I don't know, see, because it's different, I mean, we don't have printers, because like, one of our own machines, now the printers are built right in, so testing the printer is part of doing the logic and accuracy testing. So, I'm not exactly sure how this new system's gonna work with logic and accuracy until it makes it comparable, that's your, so.
So, there's no regulation that says that you have to test the printer?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't wanna say yes or no.
Can you, can you check that?
We'll check that.
Just because, I, I guess, I'm, like, I guess I'm kind of looking at it from the perspective of, we have all the printers, we send them out, you know, if one of them has an issue where they can't print, we send them another printer. Like, you know, like, the printers aren't part of the machine, they're just a, their machine that prints the thing out, and, and.
But they are probably part of the certification, so that might be, we might have to test them.
Well, I, like, if you could check that, because if, if the state says absolutely that you have to test every single printer, every single election, then what are we gonna do? Like, if they say that it's, that it's an option to do that, then I think that, because my point is, is then you don't have to store all that stuff onsite, like, I mean, hypothetically, we put all of it in whatever storage system we set up in the warehouse or whatever, and then the day.
It's gonna have to be climatically controlled, though.
Yeah.
It's a pressure.
Yeah, well, I mean, the whole idea is to have a climate-controlled location at the warehouse for all the records that we currently have that are getting rained on. But my point is, is like, if it's all in one place, then we do, you know, we go and just, you know, pick them all up, or everybody, you know, and we do the delivery and everything. I think the thing that we're gonna have to have a conversation about for next year or two is how we do the deliveries, because that was something that was brought up during one of the election board meetings, was maybe doing it on Friday.
Right, start earlier.
Starting a couple days earlier.
Because sometimes you do it a week ahead of time.
Yeah, we don't necessarily need to do that, we, you know, with all that stuff, we should be able to, that way, because right now, we're stretched pretty thin, like, to do it all in one day.
In this election, you guys can't.
Yeah.
You know, so then I'm down to Matt and Randy.
Yeah.
Because I can't get the other departments to step up and say, hey, I'll help.
Yeah.
You step juvenile, you step adult.
I can help.
That'd be awesome.
Hey, look at that.
Hey, I gotta, I gotta volunteer.
Sure.
Yeah.
This doesn't have any volunteers anymore.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, do you think that the conference room will be enough for this?
For this one, yes.
For this one, and then we can find you like a permanent location? Because I think that in the short term, it's gonna be. A lot is very touchy, I'm sure.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, I'm gonna give as much of it in that back room as I can, so.
Okay, anything else, then?
Are you okay with that?
I don't care.
Okay. Just so you know, Lisa, I care very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other project updates? No reason to review the meeting upcoming, since it's gonna cancel department updates for September 7th.
Yes, department update would be Paul's point.
Uh, right.
Wonderful program, we just pushed out just situational awareness to the community for calls that are going on, gives CPR alerts to anyone that's CPR trained that may be in the area or already at rest, that can help. Newspaper tried it out for about the last month, they seem to be very pleased with it. Happy to show anybody how to use it if they would like to know. And our public safety fair is September 7th, hope to see you all there.
Okay, anything else? You're adjourned.
It's a connection to me, it's about also, people, the responses were running here.
See, I miss.
A lot of that is, uh, we want fire.